...convening from closed session, I would ask our city attorney to please report.
Good evening Mayor and council members. City Council is in closed session this evening for a conference with labor negotiator. Council received an update on the status of negotiations and provided direction and there's no further reportable action on that item.
Thank you. So we will have roll call, please.
Okay, council members Powers, here. Singleton.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
We will stand, have a moment of silent prayer if you wish to join that, and that will be followed by the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you read the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and SherWest cable systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and Walsallby webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a secret identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Agenda approval, any additions or deletions? Are there anything that wants to be pulled? Is there anything?
On consent counts, I'd like number three and four pulled, please.
Three and four. Are there any others? Then we will go to public comments.
Okay, under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. Shawn Jacobs.
Hello, my name is Shawn Jacobs. One day, one night, one community, one fight. Relay for Life is a life-changing event that brings together more than 3.5 million people to celebrate the lives of those who are battling or have battled cancer, to remember those loved ones lost, and to raise money to fight against this horrific disease we call cancer. Good evening Mayor Payne and fellow city council members. My name is Shawn Jacobs and I was this year's event chair for the Galt 2011 Relay for Life. The 13th Galt Relay was held on May 14th and 15th at Galt High School. This year's event included 388 registered participants divided into 27 teams, of which 60 were registered survivors. This may be only a two-day event, but the planning starts almost a year in advance. My committee started working on this year's Relay for Life back in September and then started having team meetings for team captains in October. The committee is made up of volunteers from our community and a representative from the ACS, which is the American Cancer Society. The teams are made up of families, friends, coworkers, and neighbors of the team captains. Some teams have made this a yearly family event and their families will come home this one week in a year to join their loved ones in the fight against cancer. All of our participants braved a little of everything when it came to weather this year. On Saturday, the weather was nice and cool with only a little breeze. However, at around 11:30 p.m., it began to rain. However, the teams never gave up. They continued to walk all night as if the rain was not even there. For those who were not walking, their obstacle was trying to find a dry place to get some rest or sleep. I now know some may not have succeeded at finding that dry place since I found more than one tent in the trash as I was cleaning up after the event. This year, the American Cancer Society challenged us with a goal of $52,000 for passing last year's goal of $49,000. The committee decided to set a personal goal of $60,000 and presented it to the team captains. They not only accepted our challenge, but they beat it. Our total, as of Sunday, May 15th, was $67,529.69, but it hasn't stopped there. The fundraising has continued. We have raised an additional $9,000 and more is still coming in. We are now over $76,000. The committee, team captains, and the teams have done an amazing job this year. All the money raised will stay right here in our community. It is divided up into several categories. A portion will be used for research in the fight against cancer. Another portion will help fund programs that the American Cancer Society has to offer cancer patients. For example, the Look Good Feel Better for Women Going Through Cancer Treatments, the Man-to-Man Program for Women Who Are Going Through Prostate, excuse me, for men who are going through prostate cancer, and the Road to Recovery where volunteer drivers drive cancer patients to and from their appointments and treatment. These are just a few of the programs that our dollars help support. The American Cancer Society also has scholarships out there for young cancer patients that they award every year. Being a cancer survivor myself, I went to the Look Good Feel Better program for women. I was given a cosmetic bag full of makeup along with a wig and a chance to meet other women who was going through the same thing as I was. For those of you who have not had the privilege to be part of Relay for Life, you need to come out in 2012 and join us in the fun. It is a fun-filled weekend with lots of games, music, and a chance to meet some wonderful people that live right here in our community. During this one weekend a year, we all come together as one enjoying the fight against cancer. I would like to take this time to thank the community for a job well done. I also like to thank all the businesses that contributed and especially those who donated for meals for all our participants. I would also like to thank you for allowing me to have this time to share a little about Galt's 2011 Relay for Life. I would again like to invite you to come join us for the 2012 Relays for Life next spring. Thank you again and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
I think, councilman Shelton, please go ahead.
I believe that we all realize that cancer has touched every member, not only in this community, but global. It's fine volunteers like Shawn and the rest of the group that make this very successful. Did you hear her say, and I think I've mentioned before a couple of meetings ago, there's not one life that hasn't been touched. I mean, the tears, the laughter, the walking, it was fantastic. And please, if you can, try to get involved maybe next year. The Relay for Life is fantastic. Thank you Shawn for coming.
Thank you, Councilman Shelton.
Bob Hitchcock, along with John Jessup.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Bob Hitchcock from Cherokee Truck Parts in Stockton. This is John Jessup. He's the president of Shrine Club in Stockton this year and came to give a little quick report on our truck show we had up here again. You want to go first or you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, let's start with some gate money that you guys have, we are proud to do two things here. One, I'm going to present a bag full of cash to Mr. Jessup here for the Shriners for a total of $861.
Very good.
There's $300. There's $300 of the gate money that will be going to the California Chor- Rectal Coalition, I guess it is, the C4 is what they call it. My sister and a bunch of the doctors that she's worked with at UC Davis have been coming down for the last few years handing out promotional information about everything that all of us should be checked for that none of us ever want to talk about. Secondly, I have a bag full of money for the City of Galt.
Oh.
For the sum of $861, so who's the lucky recipient of that?
Can I come down and get that?
Yeah, come on down, come on down.
Of course, I nailed that hand up first. I think you're right.
There you go.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, and Barry has a couple of magazines that I left off with him. Have articles, have a good article in there about all the participation from people from, we had trucks here from Wisconsin this year that came out.
Wow.
Next year, we're hoping to make it even larger. John builds custom motorcycles in Stockton and we're going to add custom motorcycles to the show next year, which should enlarge it quite a bit. I'm going to let him talk a little bit now about the Shriners.
Have good weather?
Yeah, it was great. Don't run up, we're not done yet. Go ahead, you can go first.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to really thank the City of Galt. This event's been going on for a number of years now and it really helps the Shrine Hospitals up in Sacramento. Some people here may not know what the Shriners Hospitals are. They're a free hospital for children, doesn't matter your income status, doesn't matter who you are. If your kid's sick and we can help you, we will. So it's events like this that really help us keep that going and I just really like to thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, for any of you that have been over to the Parks and Rec office, over on what street is that? I can't remember. Over by the pool? Yeah, it's over there. There is a real nice plaque, acrylic cut out of the state of California sitting right in the middle of the City of Galt's trophy case. Well, we're here to present another one to you guys. Show it around, everybody. This is, all right, you the new mayor?
I am.
Okay, cool. So anyway, enjoy it out. We want to know that, want to let you know anyway, that we sure hope you'll let us back next year because it's going to be bigger and better. The only request I have, if I may, please help us with a little bit of local advertising of some sort. We've tried contacting all the television stations, they won't talk to us without a check in our hand. I've gone around trying to hang posters in different businesses in town, like the Pizza Parlor over here, they won't even let you through the door, so we don't allow that kind of thing in here. And several other businesses like that, so I'm going to need a little backup from everybody here if we could.
Yeah.
All right?
I would say you can count on that.
Right on.
We have some hardworking people here.
All right, anyway, thank you again. We shall see you next year, hopefully we'll provide it back.
Oh yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
While the mayor's coming up, appreciate you guys coming in, you know, I've been there a couple of years helping you and maybe we can get all the council members and some members of the public.
That would be nice.
Seeing the trucks there is awesome.
Everybody seems, you know, everybody has a persona with trucks going down the highway, just a big nap if you see so quick.
More nap.
Most of these things have beautiful interiors in them, all leather, there's several trucks around, they have an inlay that's got an embalmed floors, I mean, completely blue under the front and the inside of their truck, and most of these have, I have my wife keeps telling me about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm here tonight to give a certificate of recognition for a Galt high school student. His name is Cameron Nelson. I'd like for you to come forward. Hi Cameron, nice to meet you. You did a great job for us with the beautification committee and we had a problem trying to find a source to get name tags made for individual roses that are personalized. And Cameron is with the engineer department in high school and along with his other activities, he participates in coaching on the Galt Gators swim team. And he is, or you are still, vice president of the Galt Technology Engineering Club? And school year. Well, he was the junior lead designer for 2010-2011 Competition Robot Project. And I'll read what your certificate says. With this certificate, Cameron, of recognition in honor of your outstanding contribution, on behalf of Galt Beautification Committee, we would like to extend to you a special thank you. The committee appreciates the beautiful design of the personalized name tags for each rose planet in honor of Galt's loved ones. This is from the city. Each one has a person's name on it.
Did you press that switch?
I want to, Lord, prayer, city members. Back to my love, Vicki Jones, and other members, the thousand people.
I want to personally thank you myself too for making those. You made one for my mother and it was beautiful. And today I went to the post office to deliver some mail and I went over by her rose and saw it again and it was really a wonderful thing. Thank you very much.
Evelyn, are you done? No, she's not done.
Okay, this next award, I call it An Act of Kindness.
This is a belated award and as a matter of fact, it was intended to be presented on May 21st at the Rose Memorial Venue. This gesture of kindness, I hope, is not given against the receivers. Well, Al Baldwin, will you come forward and accept this award?
She's going to take some pictures.
Yeah, turn that camera around, Al.
You better get someone else the camera, Al.
And it says, "On behalf of the Galt Beautification Committee, we would like to extend to you a special thank you for your kind deed. The committee appreciates your special gift for listening with your heart. We hope we can continue to work together to make Galt a more pleasant place to live." And have a look this way.
A gift too?
This is a paperweight for all years.
Hold my paper?
Mm-hmm.
You're a gem.
Yeah.
Evelyn? You want to stay up there for just a sec, if you could? Does the committee want to come up?
She's like, what?
Evelyn, on behalf of the city council and the Galt Beautification Committee, we would like to present you with this certificate. And I know the other committee members will agree with me
Oh my goodness.
That we know of no other person more dedicated and loving of this city of Galt than you.
Oh, I'm overwhelmed, I'm speechless. I'm out of time.
Six miles, one, two, three, four.
Indeed, the City of Galt is very fortunate to have so many people like Evelyn and the beautification committee that really care about their community and give back to it. Also proud of our youth, they're always giving in their own way to the community. I just think we're all fortunate to have you here. Thank you so much for all that you give back to your town, your community.
Okay, I feel like we're playing musical chairs here, Al Baldwin.
We're still in public, huh? Okay.
You keep quiet, Bill, you're going to be up here next. Al Baldwin, one of the concerned citizens of Galt, and of course, I've always said that it's a community of character and it is proving itself out. Tonight, I just want to make a couple announcements. There's a Ray House Museum in Galt and on June 12th, that's a Sunday, from 1:00 to 4:00, and it's at 204 O'Calve. It's a celebration of the 20th anniversary of the opening of the Ray House. You got to see it. I'm going to read you a very quick explanation of why we're going to do this. I got a little sinus cold here. Twenty years ago, our fledgling society with $500 in the bank undertook and succeeded in creating the Ray House Museum. The restoration work headed by Tom Walters and the funding raising done by Jeanne Olson brought about the wonderful celebration of the dedication of the Galt's first museum to house the area's history and all things pertaining to it. It was three years in accomplishing the goal, but on June 9th, 1991, we held a grand opening and the community came to bask in the sunshine of accomplishment as they toured the museum and heard the praise, praise of visiting state and county officials. On June 12th, we will be celebrating that accomplishment and the fact that the Ray House has become a centerpiece for the city of Galt as well as the trajectory of things historical in our area. For those who have not had the chance to visit the museum, this will be their chance to visit and see such historic things, such as the jacket of a student who attended the Galt Junior College Aeronautical Engineering, which was held at the high school on the site for two years. They will learn about John Ray Talants as a plaster finisher and they will view the ceiling decorations that he did. It's a beautiful house. If you haven't seen it, you got to do it. It's on the 12th of this month, June. The second thing that I'd like to bring up is we have a new restaurant in town, very nice one. It's called Brewster's and I'm going to read you a little about that real quick and then I'll let you out of here. I will have, you won't have to worry, eat it till later. If you haven't had a chance to go to see the wonderful restoration work at the Brewster's Restaurant, don't put it off. You will be amazed at what the owners have done to preserve this very historic building that housed the first U.S. Postal Office in Galt. They began by returning the name of Brewster's on the facade as it was in 1869, that's 1869, for you to see. It was Galt's first department store where folks came for miles around to purchase fabric, clothing, boots, shoes, ribbons, nails, feed for the animals, and food for the family. We need another store like that, by the way. And then they went to work to reinforce the old brick structure in such a subtle way that the image columns are right in front of you and you don't even notice them. Upstairs, the old Odd Fellows Meeting Hall has been transformed into a delightful large room for group dinners and special events. The stage is still there as it was in 1869. Wow. The outside patio makes use of what has been an empty lot since the 1860s and you can enjoy your meal listening to the tumbling of the water in a nearby waterfall. Inside, one wall is filled with pictures which the owners researched at the Galt Area Historical Society Picture Archives and they intend to add more as time goes on. If you haven't been overcome by all of this, you may look overhead to see a mural that reminds you of the beginnings of which we, the railroad and the water tower, all included in it. Oh yes. And it did, we did, we mentioned the food. They serve lunch and dinner and the food is great and varied in offering and a price that you can afford. The staff is friendly and the owners are justly proud of their preservation of the historical irreparable in this city of Galt. You got to try it and they do have a glass elevator that goes up and down and you might be amazed what you can see going up and down in that thing. It faces the railroad a little bit, so if a train's coming by, that's a real treat. And you can look at the stars, bring your girlfriend or a wife for an anniversary or whatever, and enjoy a nice, restful evening. They have an outside patio when it's real hot and you like to get under the stars and the moon, try it, you'll like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Well, Leslieus Parsons and I live within the city of Galt. I'm here tonight because the Wendy Hope area Neighborhood Watch is having their annual, it's the fourth year garage sale, all through Wendy Hope and on Lincoln Way. And they do this to raise donations for Neighborhood Watch. And when they're done with it, they have the Several Palsy Association come in and pick up all the leftovers. So it all goes to good things. So it's on June 11th from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And they do all the advertising for you, so if anybody in that area is interested in having a garage sale, that is the day to do it. Wendy Hope has also been very helpful in helping the Grange get started with their Neighborhood Watch meeting and also the Meadowview area has been very helpful with it too, so come out on June 11th from 7:00 to 1:00 and have a good time at a garage sale. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then we will return to the consent calendar and councilman Cruz pulled item number three. Do you want to, can I get me to read it? Read them, please. I'll read the entire, is that okay?
Yeah.
We have eight items. Number one, the Number one, the minutes of the special meeting of May 12th, 2011, and May 17th, 2011, and the regular meeting of May 17th, 2011. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, which was pulled and will be discussed, ordinance number 2011-04 of the Galt City Council repealing Chapter 2.28 and adding Chapter 2.70 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the Planning Commission. Number four, ordinance number 2011-05 regarding the Parks and Recreation Commission. Number five, uh, and number four was pulled also and will be discussed. Uh, number five, the appropriations limit for fiscal year 2011, 2012. Number six, adoption of the mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the wastewater treatment plant solar power purchase agreement project. Number seven, approval of the proclamation recognizing Olympic Day, June 23rd, 2011. And number eight, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending April 2011. Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
I just thought it was more appropriate to pull both items three and four since they are ordinances and not have them done with housecleaning, have them voted separately.
Okay.
So I, motion, we, I do make a motion that we approve items number three.
Uh, city attorney, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Um, no ma'am, if you, if you desired, I was just going to point out that this ordinance was introduced at the last city council meeting. And, uh, the first ordinance relating to the Planning Commission establishes the functions and the rules relating to that commission, um, updates a current ordinance. Uh, there's been no changes since its introduction at the last meeting and is presented for your adoption this evening.
So this is the second reading?
Yes, that's correct.
But, um, Councilman Cruz would like to have them voted on separately, is there any reason why we shouldn't do that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then proceed with your motion.
I did, made the motion and I'll second, I concur.
There's a first and a second. Roll call vote, please. Okay, Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Pinck?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Uh, item number four, where it was.
And this ordinance relates to the Parks and Rec Commission and again establishes uh, purpose, functions, and rules relating to that commission. It was also introduced at the last meeting and there have been no changes since its introduction and is presented for your adoption this evening.
Again, this is the second reading, is there a motion?
A motion we approve.
One second. We have a first and a second, roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Pinck?
Aye.
Uh, motion has passed unanimously. Uh, is there a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the remainder, please.
Second.
We have a first and a second, roll call vote. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Pinck?
Aye.
Uh, it's passed unanimously and we will now go to presentation. Okay, the first presentation we have is the proclamation recognizing Olympic Day, June 23rd. And we do have our Olympic gold medalists in the audience. Would you read the proclamation, please? Much is coming up. Okay. Uh, "June 23rd, 2011, International Olympic Day Proclamation. Whereas the California Winter Games Committee is a nonprofit organization comprised of leaders from the business community, political arena, and nonprofit and non-governmental organizations, whose mission is to explore hosting a future winter Olympic game in the Lake Tahoe region. And whereas the United States Olympic Committee may solicit as early as next year for the 2022 Winter Games bid process, and Committee wishes to explore how best to position the state for a bid to host the Winter Games. And whereas competing for a host city Winter Olympics bid will be a valuable endeavor for California and for the Sacramento region that will bring together our communities to highlight our state and region's best assets on the world stage. And whereas the California Winter Games Committee will work closely alongside Nevada's Reno-Tahoe Winter Games Coalition to promote both states' individual and combined interests in a future Winter Olympic Games, and the Tahoe region has a rich heritage of Olympic history for hosting the 1960s Squaw Games. And whereas the Tahoe region is equipped to host the Winter Games as world-class ski resorts, desirable accommodations, and the recognizability of the United States to host a very successful Olympic Games. And whereas hosting the Olympic Games in California will increase tourism interest as Olympic attendees will likely travel through Sacramento and other parts of California, taking advantage of the state's airports, wine country, museums, hospitality, scenery, and outdoor activities. And whereas the first Olympic Games appeared at Athens in the year 1896, and International Olympic Day was first celebrated on the 23rd of June, 1948. Therefore, be it resolved by the Galt City Council that the Galt City Council commends and encourages the California Winter Games Committee to further pursue the opportunity to host the Winter Olympic Games in the Lake Tahoe region. And be it further resolved that the Galt City Council recognizes June 23rd, 2011 as International Olympic Day." Wow, that's all. Uh, I realize that, I don't think you were in the Winter Olympics, you were in another event, correct?
Summer Olympics.
Yeah, you want to talk about?
But I still, I, I still definitely support a local Olympics in Paris. I don't, 2022, is that what it's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's been a long time. Maybe I'll have children in the Winter Olympics.
Yeah. There's a picture.
So I'll just say a few words about, um, a couple of upcoming events that relate to International Olympic Day on June 23rd. Uh, the River Cats are hosting their Olympic Day on June 20th. It's gonna be at their 12 o'clock game. And several local Olympians and Olympians throughout Northern California will be speaking to kids that have come from all the Parks and Rec departments from all over the county. So there'll be a lot of, um, opportunity to get autographs and hear about Olympic experiences from, from all those people. Unfortunately, I will be at the National Championships in Eugene, Oregon at that time, so I won't be participating, I will be there in spirit, of course. Um, but I just want to thank the city council for all their support of Olympics, especially in a community that hasn't, um, seen much Olympic champions, I guess, come out of it.
I think you're our one. And we are so proud of you.
But I, I do know, and Councilman Shelton will know too, from, the coaches and the athletes in this community are, um, are the best around. Uh, we've got so many, um, young children that are participating in our Parks and Rec Department and our junior high and our high school and all the different, um, programs that this community provides, will definitely have some Olympians in the future. And, um, I encourage everybody out there to become involved either with sports or with adult league sports or with coaching. Um, you make a difference to every single child in the community and we need all the coaches we can get. So, thank you very much for, um, Mayor, Mayor Pinck to approve this and thank all the city council members and everybody, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie, for being here and you will always be our, our star, you will always be our Olympic star. Thank you.
And good luck on your trials when you go there, the June 20th.
Yeah, actually, she was very difficult to corner. She's been all over the world and we, this meeting fell on a good day, so we're glad you're fortunate. Yeah. Okay, I think we have another presentation. Um, I don't believe anybody's here from Project Love. No, we'll pin that out for the next meeting. Uh, Redevelopment Agency, Agency Galt Housing Rehabilitation Program, Chris Sorias, Senior Planner. Welcome, Chris.
Uh, thank you, uh, welcome, I'm glad to be here, give me a second.
That's okay, it takes a minute to warm up the projector.
It's coming.
Thanks, Al. Give it just a minute. We need to do a Control F. Jason, what was that, a Control F?
Was it a Con?
Hmm. We need the engineering student back in here.
Yeah.
Can't really, huh?
He just left. Let's go get him.
There it is.
There we go.
Yay! Thank you, city manager.
Yeah.
We're, we're live. Uh, good evening, mayor and city council members, my name is Chris Sorias, I'm a senior planner with the city's Community Development Department. The item you have before you this evening is a presentation on the Galt Housing Rehabilitation Program. I've had the good fortune, uh, since I've been here, to administer this program for the city. The city of Galt has offered this program since 1997. It provides loans and grants to income-qualified families to make repairs to homes. The following report will explain in detail, uh, the program. The house on the slide was actually one of the first homes to use the program. Uh, the upgrades to it included a new water heater, exterior paint, grab bars in the bathroom, new smoke detectors, and an electrical upgrade. I think it's on F Street. There are four goals of the housing program. The first is to improve the housing conditions for lower-income families. Second is to eliminate lighting conditions. Third is to preserve the stock of existing affordable housing. And fourth is to maintain a revolving fund which will allow assistance under this program to be recycled over a period of time. To be eligible for the program, applicants must meet specific income requirements. The income requirement is 80% of the county median income. However, we do give priority to those in the 50% or below category. The chart on the slide shows the maximum income for each of the income groups. The 80% median income is shown as the low-income category on the chart on the slide, and for reference, that's $58,500 for a family of four. 50% of the county median income is the very low-income category, which is $36,550 for a family of four. And the extremely low income is 30% of the county median income. The target area adopted for the program is shown on the screen. The target area contains the city's older housing stock and those most likely to use the program, although the program is available citywide as long as the applicants meet the program qualifications. The types of home repairs that are eligible for the program are those that correct code issues, health and safety problems, energy efficiency upgrades, and accessibility improvements for the elderly and handicapped. Repairs for cosmetic purposes are not permitted. The most common types of repairs include roofing repairs, HVAC upgrades, plumbing repairs, electrical upgrades, uh, and other similar type home issues. Carpet and other flooring can be replaced if there are health and safety issues associated with it. It can't be replaced if someone just doesn't like the color or type. And all residential units are eligible for the program. Property owners interested in participating in the program are screened for eligibility before completing an application. The brief screening determines property eligibility, or, uh, determines property location and income eligibility. Once screened for eligibility, they complete an application and provide documents as required. Once an application is completed, we schedule inspections to, uh, review the extent of the requested work. We prepare a work write-up describing in detail the needed work along with estimating the cost of the corrective work. The work write-up is then reviewed with the applicant. Once a work write-up has been completed, the applicant will be given a list of pre-qualified contractors to schedule appointments to obtain bids, although they may use licensed contractors that are not on the pre-qualified list. The city will provide the applicant with a bid package for use by contractors, which includes the work write-up. The bid package will also explain the bidding procedures. We often have contractors attend a pre-bidding conference where a representative of the, of the city will explain the scope of the rehabilitation work and the bidding process. When the applicant has chosen a contractor for the work, staff prepares reports to bring to the loan review committee to approve the loans. Once an applicant's loan has been approved, the city's consultant will provide contract documents for both the property owner and contractor to sign. The contract will contain a construction schedule and a schedule for releasing payments based upon work completed. The city's consultant will monitor the contractor's work and will authorize payments only after all work has been checked and complete. The next slide provides details on the loan and grant packages. As you can see, there are maximum and minimum loans. However, the city does have the ability to go above the maximum amount depending upon the circumstances. The loan terms will vary, many loans are deferred for 15 years. This option is available if the loan payment brings the applicant's total mortgage and utility expenses above 35% of their gross monthly income. Some applicants make income-only payments and others will have full amortized loan. It depends on the applicant's, uh, income and ability to pay and staying below the 35% of their monthly gross income. The maximum grant is $5,000. Most of the grants have gone to projects in the mobile home park. The city did provide crank, paint grants at various times, its availability is really dependent on, uh, available funding. Investors are able to use the program, but they must enter into rent limitation agreements which ensure that the rents they are providing are affordable to the targeted income groups. We don't get many requests from investors. All loans are secured against the property, the city loan is second, in second position to the home mortgage. As mentioned earlier, the loan review committee reviews each loan and either approves or denies the loan. It reviews the work to be completed, the bids, the loan-to-debt ratio, and the applicant's credit score when making its decision. The committee is scheduled to meet when there are projects to review. It's currently made up of two department heads and a local banking official. The city contracts with Connerly and Associates to provide program management. They do the screening, the application, initial inspection, work write-up, loan underwriting, and construction management. The city has used them since the program started in 1997. Staff provides contract management for Connerly, coordinates LRC meetings, and works on securing and dispersing funds for the projects. Will also accompany Connerly on the initial walkthroughs and when projects are completed. Connerly's contract is expiring in July of this year, so we have, we have included a staff report and a resolution for the renewal as part of the redevelopment agency's meeting tonight. The funding used for the program comes from tax increment or redevelopment funds. 20% of redevelopment funds must be used for affordable housing. This is called the Sebysag Funds. The city has used the Housing and Rehabilitation Program for a number of years to, uh, use the 20% set-aside funding. The next slide shows a history of the program since it began in 1997. To date, we have completed 196 projects for a total of close to $2.5 million. You can see by the chart that the years with the fewest projects and total funds coincides with other larger projects that use the 20% set-aside funds. In 2003 and 2004, funding went to Grizzly Hollow Project, and in recent years, funding went to Galt Place. The next slide shows a breakdown of where the money is going. You can see the bulk of the loans have been paid back to the city and a large portion have been for grants. You can also see some of the loans are deferred, which come back to the city once properties are sold, refinanced, or paid back according to loan terms. The three amortized loans are making payments and at last check, all are current. Unfortunately, you could also see that the city, the city does lose some funds due to the homeowner defaulting on the loan. Uh, in the cases above, both were recent defaults where the homeowners were upside down on mortgages and I believe each filed bankruptcy. The remaining slides are photos of pro, program projects. Uh, as mentioned earlier, many of the projects were for code-related issues or correction of structural problems, so the upgrades are sometimes not as dramatic as a total house makeover. The paint grant, uh, program provided us a more noticeable upgrade, but unfortunately there are a few and we didn't have good photos of them. And I've learned I really need to work on my photography skills, so I apologize for the photos. The first photos are the basic roofing project, which is really common, a common project for the, uh, program. The next slide shows, uh, shows a flooring project. In this case, the carpet was extremely worn and torn and dated, so we included it in the program. The next slide shows a siding and paint project. The photo on the lower left is an example of some of the siding issues the house had. Uh, there were many areas that were rotted and cracked, so the pro, the project included replacing the bad siding where it needed and painting the house. The next slide shows another siding and paint project. And one of the benefits of the program is how owners respond to the improvements. In this case, you could see, uh, the homeowner increased her maintenance of the lawn, uh, the grass is better cut, the tree is trimmed, and she installed that cute little perimeter fence. The next slide shows one of our more significant projects. The house had major water damage to the side facing the alley. You can see it in the photo, but it really doesn't do it justice. The constant water buildup created a mold issue on the inside rooms adjacent to this wall. When we visited, the carpet in one room was just totally soaked. We ended up removing moldy carpet and drywall from the inside. And as you can see, we created a sidewalk on the side of the house facing the alley and made sure that the water drained to the alley. We also put on a new roof and repainted the home. And I believe the homeowner paid off this loan at one point. The next slide shows another roofing project. This one's significant because the house is a historic resource and this project actually went to the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee for approval. We also rehabbed the front porch. You can kind of detect it from the column supporting the porch. And this roof bowed. You can see it in the before photo and then that was one of the things we fixed in the after photo. So, the program was nice to use to basically stabilize a historic resource for the city. The next project was one of the more extensive projects. There's quite a few things going on in this photo. It included a new roof, new stucco, new heating and air conditioning unit, new windows, and we did a lot of repairs to the inside. This house is on Oak Avenue, I believe. The next slide shows some of the repairs to the flooring on the inside of the house on the previous slide. The existing flooring was just in horrible condition, so we basically replaced it as needed. And that concludes the presentation. Staff is here to answer any questions you might have. And I believe a representative from Connerly and Associates is also here if you have any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the city council members? How are people made aware of this program?
Well, we used to run... when we had money, we used to run ads in the paper. But we found that most of our projects really came from word of mouth. I mean, people would see it, kind of respond, and that's how we probably end up getting most of our clients. We used to attend events and hand out flyers. But since the program doesn't have the funding, we've really scaled back on our advertising just because we don't have the money to do the projects. But as soon as funding comes back, we hope to go back out with some sort of advertising and, you know, get the program back up and running at a good clip.
Is this fully funded by redevelopment funds?
Correct.
So, if that program goes away, then...
This program would go away, correct. Unless we identified some other funding to keep it going. But that is correct.
Any other comments? Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
That was very entertaining. Very good job.
Thank you.
And it does make us feel good to know that we are helping people that need help.
Yeah, and that's, you know, in working in planning, we often are put in a position of telling people what they can't do. So, this was kind of a fun program to work and actually be able to help a lot of people. So, it's been fun.
Thank you. Okay, we have no scheduled matters. Regular calendar, we'll go to Parks and Rec... Parks and Rec Department, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor Payne and members of the city council. I have two reports. The first one is the Concert in the Park Series. At the April nineteenth meeting of the city council, the city council directed staff to explore the possibility of concerts in the park and return to the council with a proposal. Staff in listening to the city council identified some desired outcomes, including that community image and sense of place should be strengthened and community members from different parts of Galt would interact. To achieve these outcomes, staff is envisioning a free concert on Friday evenings, two at Veterans Field, although we're rethinking there might be a better location to help some businesses, and two at Community Park, and this would be in August. Music would be from six to eight P.M. with a variety of music that would appeal to families, such as oldies, rock and roll, country, jazz, et cetera. The actual type of music would depend on which bands were hired. We're envisioning a purely a healthy, wholesome family event where families would come with their friends and neighbors and have a picnic and maybe bring a bottle of wine or a beer with them and enjoy their picnic lunch and listen to the music. We would not have any alcohol sales, although we would allow for people to bring their own for their own consumption. The estimated cost, as listed in the report, is a little over thirteen thousand. We would go out to local businesses and seek sponsorships. Staff is concerned at this point about being stretched too thin and doing as good a job as we want. Staff is fully on board with the idea. I think it would be a wonderful addition for the community of Galt. And if directed to do it this year, we will do it this year. That is why we included the alternative for you to consider of August 2012 with the idea that would maximize the chance for success as well as let us begin the concert series in June next year. And at this point, I would be glad to entertain any questions you may have.
Councilman Singleton, this was your...
Yes, it was.
Do you want to talk about it a little bit?
What a great concept. And Barry, thank you so much for doing a great job of putting it so eloquently. Right now, my idea, I think, is... Like you said, we are stretched at this point with the Independence Day celebration and trying to get things together. So, I would be supporting that we would probably... it'd be better for the event itself and for the township to do this next year. It would give us time to get sponsors together. And I do believe that it would be a great event for... well, through the summer, several months. But it gives us time to get things together and get our Independence Day celebration like we want to see it happen. Thank you very much for doing that for me.
Thank you.
And the council.
Appreciate your comments and your consideration for staff. I think it's a great idea and I look forward to it in 2012. But are there any other comments?
No, I think it's a great project, too. And I'm glad you're holding off because, you know, we are working on the Independence Day and you guys are working really hard for that. And I really didn't know how much everything entailed before we started doing it because you learn things when you get to doing the first thing. And I think that's a really good idea. But we'll be ready to rock and roll next year.
And staff really likes the idea. Particularly if it happens in 2012, which we're excited to have some ideas of how to really make it a smash success.
Yeah.
City manager? If you're interested in the 2012 idea, recommend a motion to direct staff to begin work on that event and put money in next year's budget to accomplish that. Actually, not next year, it would be 2012, 2013 fiscal year budget.
I would like to entertain that motion to continue...
Actually, if I could, you know, to risk of counteracting the city manager. Some funds would need to be put into this budget year because we were thinking about starting the series in June, which would be this current fiscal year. We've estimated the cost for the four concerts at thirteen thousand. Now, some of that, that won't... if you have a concert, you don't double that because, you know, some of the items, the cost spread out over the time. But I would suggest leaving this in and we won't spend it all. Or I can come back with a, you know, different recommendation for appropriation of what we'll need in this fiscal year as startup money for it. But we would need some money.
I would like you to come back with that figure, in my opinion. Then that way, we could know what we're in for this next year.
Before we proceed, I think we have public comments.
We need to modify it a little bit.
We have a speaker. We might want to hear from that speaker.
I didn't want to vote until we... I wasn't sure if we had speakers on that.
Yeah.
Well, I requested it. Al Baldwin, I live in Galt. And the concept on the outside seems wonderful. I don't know the kind of music you want to play, you know, or how loud it's going to be. But I'm sure that if you can hear a train whistle or even a train within a half a mile, you can hear whatever's going on over there with the neighbors. And I'm assuming you've got the neighbors' permission, if you want to say, or at least they get their input to this because it is close to a lot of homes. You're going to be doing it in August. And I hate to be a rain on this thing because it sounds so good, but you're going to be doing it in August and school will be opening up. And within a, I'd say, three thousand feet, give or take, there's a school there. So, if you're going to have liquor, wine, beer, whatever you're going to have on there and it's going to be an open field for it, I would have some second thoughts about letting them help themselves through their coolers and everything else. In fact, I don't even know if I would have alcohol on it. It's a stimulant, it's a... It just makes you do things sometimes when you can't control it. When you're out in an open field on a nice, warm night and you're just taking a can or two or three or four of beer and you have... if you have it before school and maybe during school, the kids are running around a little bit. You're going to have to have, I'm sure, a lot of police force there. You're going to have to make sure they don't drink as much. You're going to have to find a way to take them out. And if the child's there and he sees his father being taken out, it's a real bummer for the character part of this whole thing. So, I can't let it go without saying something about the alcohol. And I don't know about the music because I don't know how loud it's going to be, but if it starts here and it works out good, then I can see it in the future getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And I just have a challenge with seeing people out there, being an example to their children and other children and saying, "If he can do it, gee, we can sit out in the grass some time and do it ourselves." Even though it's illegal in the parks, they would still look at that and possibly bring that up. I'm just bringing this up because it's something that I can't just let go and be the bad guy or the good guy on. I have to bring it up. I feel like I must bring it up. It's my moral concern to bring it up. So, whether you approve it or not, I wanted to at least give my input on this thing before you voted. So, it's out in the open and you know. So, thank you very much.
That's how you feel.
Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al. Okay, were there any other comments on that?
I have a comment.
I think so, I almost missed you.
Councilman Singleton, please.
Do we allow alcohol to be consumed in the parks on a daily basis? Counsel?
Certain parks are like picnics. They had... It's certain parks that have been identified and in areas, like picnic areas, so that if you have a family picnic and you bring a bottle of wine or six packs of beer, that's when the alcohol is allowed. It's not allowed for people to put it in their brown bag and walk around the park.
Any other comments, questions?
Do we now have to modify Mr. Rudolph, what I have recommended?
Maybe you could give us a...
My understanding is that the manager had recommended a motion to direct staff to prepare to conduct a Concert in the Park Series for the 2012 season.
We'll bring back another report.
Number for...
In the springtime, once we have more information, what we're going to be doing, what the costs are going to be, we'll bring it back again for final council direction. But we can at least get direction from council now to start working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be my motion.
One second. We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please. Is everyone clear what the motion is? If not, we can repeat it. Okay, we have a roll call vote, please.
Base man Powers. Aye.
Councilman for Singleton.
Aye.
Councilman for Shelton.
Aye.
Councilman for Cruz.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion is passed unanimously. And then you'll be... staff will be bringing back your recommendations.
Bring back the final plans. I believe.
Third explain.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss, thank you again for your assistance on that.
And when I tell staff tomorrow, they'll be very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Probably watching.
I believe you have the next item as well.
Okay. Again, Mayor Payne and members of the city council, you have a report in front of you dealing with community, individual, and partial individual benefits. At the strategic planning process that the city council had on January eleventh, one of the goals for the city was identified as to improve financial stability and maintain reserves. One of the objectives underneath that goal was to establish a process to identify programs and services that benefit individual users as well as community benefits. These definitions that you have in front of you can be a helpful tool for both council and staff in deciding how to allocate scarce resources and determining fees. The definitions in front of you, the individual benefits are things like if a person or a group has exclusive reserve use of a facility, like a picnic site, that's an individual benefit. They go to the city clerk and have received notary service, that's an individual benefit. Or plan checks your individuals. A community benefit, on the other hand, is something that benefits the community as a whole. The examples listed are park maintenance. First of all, many, many people in the community use the parks. Plus, they improve property values if they're well-maintained. So, that's a community benefit, whether you're actually using the park currently or not. Patrol by police officers, patrolling the streets is something that everybody benefits from, whether you have an officer assist you specifically or not. The interchange project that Public Works is commandeering will benefit the entire community. Partial community benefits are things like sports tournaments. The individual benefit belongs to the individuals or the teams playing in the tournament. The community could benefit, particularly if we have an overnight tournament where people spend the night here and spend money in Galt. And so, that helps with the tax base. The Welcome to Galt program through the city clerk or the Underground Service Alert markouts that Public Works does. Our other example is a partial community benefit. Upon approval of the definitions tonight, or refined definitions, if they get approved, the next step would be that staff would return to council with a chart of services for each department reflective of the definitions. That would be an even more refined tool for the council and for staff to use in deciding how to allocate resources. And at this point, I see some question looked on faces. I will add that, as it says in the report, that it certainly seems appropriate for a community benefit that people not pay a fee or pay a reduced fee. For an individual benefit where it's just they or the organization benefiting, they pay a fee that covers all or most of the cost. At this point, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Can I piggyback on the fee thing for a second? And I don't know where this fits into it. Are you going to have fees based for residents and non-residents? Does that come into it?
That's a... The council can certainly pass those kind of fees. That's not really what this is concerning. This is concerning a definition of what a community benefit is, individual, partial. And then we'll come back with each department will have a list of all the services we offer and are they... which category do they fit into? And then the council will have that as a tool. So, when we bring forward recommended fees, you could look and say, "Okay, only there's an individual benefiting, so they're going to cover costs." But the community benefits on this, so we can subsidize that. It's really providing you a tool.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? I would make my own comment again. I think it's good to have the definitions as guidelines. I'm a little concerned about where we're definitely saying people have to pay for the full cost of something. And let me ask you a question. Like, for example, the swimming pool here. It never... we never recover all of the cost that it takes to run the swimming pool. How would you handle that? Are you going to raise the fees or estimate the number of people that are coming out and raise the fees to cover the full cost of the swimming pool?
In that case, the aquatics is a really good example. Public swimming pools are never completely cost-recovery because if you charge fees high enough to make a cost recovery, you create a concrete club and it doesn't serve the community. These definitions are just an additional tool. When the city council and the staff considers setting fees, we have multiple filters that we use. And all this does is provide you with another tool to consider. There's nothing that locks you into any of this.
Any of the costs that's described in here where if it's partial community benefits, widespread community benefits, you're not asking us to lock in the cost to cover those?
No, no. No, no. There- that- all this is is a definition that provides you an additional tool when considering how to allocate resources. So you could- I could envision something where, you know, let's say, uh, a dance class. And let's say we charge forty dollars for a dance class. Well, that individual, the person benefiting from that dance class. And if you were to hear some complaints that, "Oh, that's too high," well, if the co- if the cost to provide it was forty dollars, then you have a good tool to say, "Well, yeah, but there's no benefit to anybody else, it's just a benefit to you." So it's just one more tool for you to use. And that you could say, "Well, okay, we wanna make sure that people get that kind of exercise, so we'll only charge half of it," or whatever. It's just another tool for you to consider.
So we, uh, we'd have the opportunity, when fees are set on anything, to discuss it and decide-
Council always has that option.
The impact of what it would do to the community. What might seem an individual benefit, uh, actually can somewhat be a community benefit if you're keeping people healthy and, uh, alive and all of that. So that- that was what I wanted to clear up, to be sure that, uh, we aren't being so narrow in the definition that we're going to, um, not really consider the community benefits that might be involved.
The key to the definition is not the examples. Examples were given purely for, you know, to help you understand it. The key is the actual definition. Uh, for example, uh, the individual benefit are benefits that for the most part are those received by the individuals or organizations rather than the rest of the community. Now, that's just a nice tool for you to have when looking at setting fees or allocating resources to departments.
Does this fit in fine with our, uh, Park Master Plan? Do you know? Have you- have we reviewed it?
I have not compared it to the master plan, but, uh, I definitely think it does. Again, we don't charge people for park maintenance, because that's a real community benefit. We charge what it costs to take a- a special interest class. And so tha- that's two good examples right there, uh, for our department.
Okay. Um, anybody else have any comments? Is there a motion?
Well, can I just make one more comment? That wasn't just- we kinda just brought this up when we had those, uh, goals and stuff when I was in there. So I just wanted to make sure that that was one of the goals that we had put in there for getting done by-
Directly from the strategic plan.
Correct.
So we can check another one off.
Yeah. Awesome.
Okay. I'm ready to approve, to entertain a- a motion to approve the definitions.
I recommend that- that's- I think the motion that we accept-
The definition.
The definitions. That's stated in the package.
Is there a second?
All second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll offer the roll call vote.
Base Man Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go to the next item, uh, under community development.
Yes, um, the council directed staff to suspend certain regulations regarding temporary signs about a year ago, and Sandy has prepared a report as well as a PowerPoint to give you an update and some recommendations. So I will turn it over to her.
Good evening, Mayor Powell. Uh, about the same time last year, uh, prior to the council, there was public comment from a couple of business owners who talked about several vertical banners of golf feather signs that were driven around town, but that were found to be in violation of the city's sign regulations. Uh, city council at that time asked staff to return with a report, applying to the existing regulations about temporary signs compared to other cities, and the council was of option. On June fifteenth, twenty ten, council decided that the economic conditions of the sign justify a temporary suspension of the city's enforcement of temporary signs from its fees, display time limits, and message content restrictions for twelve month periods. Uh, they also asked that there are international flyer of temporary- temporary sign regulations. And, uh, that basically was the, uh, flyer that's like, "We're having a sale on temporary signs for the year." Uh, we attached that to the handout within your support, and it goes up to the listening side.
Sandy, do you have the microphone?
Yes.
Is it on?
Yes. Okay. Okay, try that again.
Okay.
Uh, now that the twelve month period's, uh, nearing a close, uh, staff is requesting direction from the city council as to whether you wish to extend this interim program, um, or if you would prefer that- that code enforcement staff go back to enforcing the city's adopted sign ordinance, or some other, uh, direction as you deem appropriate. During this one-year period, the planning department received eight temporary sign applications. Um, we have a feeling that there's probably a lot more out there than- than eight, but we did get ten- eight, uh, applications. Since we have three new council members this year, we are providing the same information that we provided to the prior council, so that you have a basis for your decision. Um, because the focus has been on the business community, we are not discussing, uh, other types of signs tonight, like political signs, real estate signs, that sort of thing. We're just focusing on the commercial temporary signs. The, uh, signs in the city of Galt are regulated by chapter eight point forty of the Galt zoning code. Uh, the purpose statement for the sign ordinance is shown on the slide. Um, this was adopted by city council to provide for the use of signs which meet all of these topics, probably the most significant of which is preserve and improve the appearance of the city of Galt as a place to live, work, and visit, promote commerce, uh, provide for fair and equal treatment of sign users, and eliminate confusing, distracting, or dangerous, uh, sign displays which interfere with vehicular traffic. The sign ordinance basically addresses two types of signs. You have permanent signs and you have temporary signs. Permanent signs, those are displayed on a building, uh, or on a pole adjacent to a building. Temporary signs are generally for a limited period of time, like a banner or an A-frame sign. For the most part, the city's regulations for permanent signs don't seem to cause too much grief, uh, with the business community. Um, we have a pretty generous, uh, sign allocation and size allocation. Most businesses actually end up using less than their full advertising allotment for permanent signs. Consequently, again, we're only gonna discuss temporary signs tonight. So in addition to permanent signs, uh, local businesses are permitted to display certain temporary signs to allow them to advertise temporary special events. Those are typically special sales, grand openings, uh, closings, that sort of thing. In fact, one of the findings for the planning director to approve a temporary sign permit is that it's temporary in nature and it does not constitute regular advertising. This was the main reason that several businesses were contacted last year while they were displaying those vertical banner signs, um, because those banners simply advertised a product, such as tacos or flowers or something like that. It wasn't advertising a special event, which was the intent of the temporary sign ordinance. Um, if the signs had said roses are ten percent off or some other special promotion, then those would have been permitted as long as they met the size restrictions and the, uh, owner had obtained a temporary sign permit. Now, in the realm of temporary signs, we sorta have two different kinds. There are those that don't require a permit and those that do require a permit. Uh, temporary signs that are allowed without a permit are listed on the slides. Those are if you have signs in your windows that don't exceed fifty percent of the area of the window. Um, you can have a- an American flag that meets those, uh, development restrictions, or a menu board associated with a drive-through restaurant is another example. Temporary signs that do require a permit are, uh, inflatable devices or beacons, air balloons. They are permitted, uh, as long as you get a temporary sign permit, and in all non-residential zoning districts. Banners, uh, do require a permit. Uh, they are permitted with approval of a permit in all zoning districts. Pennant poles, uh, are basically usually what they show at, uh, model homes in a new subdivision. And portable signs, which are typically A-frame signs that most businesses set on the sidewalk out inside of their- their business. Those, again, are permitted with approval of a temporary permit in all non-residential districts. There are general development standards that apply to all temporary signs. Uh, we do not allow in the city of Galt off-site signage. Um, we define that all as billboards, uh, back in nineteen ninety-eight. So if you're- if you have a business that's located at two thousand C Street, you can only display a sign at two thousand C Street. Um, one sort of gray area in the code is for a shopping center, where typically, um, if- for a strict interpretation of the code would be a business that's in a shopping center would need to display, uh, their sign at their building frontage. But what most businesses like to do is put it out at the street frontage of the shopping center, which isn't really along their street frontage, but it is within their shopping center. So that's been a little bit of a gray area. Um, staff has been fairly lenient, but we- if city council has some specific direction, we'd- we'd certainly appreciate that tonight. Um, another development standard is no signs in public ways, so you cannot block a sidewalk or- or put your sign in the street. Uh, and then there's a maximum height for temporary signs. Then there are specific development standards depending on the type of sign that you're proposing. Um, this slide physically goes through those same types of temporary signs and talks about how many are allowed, uh, what the maximum size is, the maximum height limit, and how long they can be displayed. And that, again, is also in the handout that we have available on our website, uh, have provided to the Chamber of Commerce. Code enforcement officer hands it out when he talks to people about signs. For procedures, uh, most temporary signs, it's a one-page, not even a full page, it's about half a page, application form, a ten dollar permit fee, and the planning depart- department will approve it if it meets those requirements. Um, they do have to agree to remove the temporary sign at the completion of the display period. That's actually the temporary banner permit application form right there. Last year, um, staff contacted other cities, because like any other zoning regulations, temporary signs vary from city to city, uh, but we wanted to get a general idea of how Galt fared compared to other cities. We actually found that, um, at least by the ordinance, Galt is less restrictive than several cities we contacted. Uh, city of Lodi has the most stringent regulation of the cities we contacted. They don't allow any banners or other temporary signs at all. Now, enforcement of that is another issue. I'm sure everyone's seen temporary banners in Lodi, but- but the- their code does say that they are prohibited. Uh, Citrus Heights is also pretty strict. They allow a temporary sign for a total of thirty days per calendar year and subject to a hundred and fifty dollar permit fee. Uh, Roseville is more lenient. They allow one banner per business with no time limits or message limitations and no fees. Um, Rockland and Willow's, um, both experimented by adopting ordinances that set forth economic stimulus regulations. So they did sort of what Galt did, uh, only more officially. Um, decided that based on the economy, they would allow some lenience in their temporary sign regulations. Rockland's ordinance is effective through July third, but I contacted them and they have just extended that for another year. Uh, Willow's expires in July of twenty twelve. Um, while their approach is innovative, we do note that their reduction in regulations was not very significant, um, in either jurisdictions. They- they pretty much eased just the time limit for display, uh, ninety days a year in Rockland and up to the city's discretion in Willow's, and they removed the requirement for a permit or fee for those types of signs. Um, for alternatives, if city council, uh, does not wish to extend this interim program that we established in June of twenty ten, um, you have a couple of other options. Uh, you could discontinue this program and go back to enforcing the regular sign ordinance. You could consider a permanent sign ordinance amendment and- and direct staff to bring back the temporary sign ordinance for- for some revisions, or you can provide any hybrid or other direction as you deem fit. Now, the main things that city council sort of suspended enforcement of last year were you don't require, um, any message limitation, so the banner can say just roses, it doesn't have to say roses on sale. Um, there is no ten dollar permit fee, and they can have- there's no time limit on the banners. Before you had to have- the banner could be displayed up to ninety days and they could have four banners per year, but now it's- there's no time limit. So that concludes my report. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Anybody? Okay. Uh, what we're looking to approve tonight is, uh, whether to continue allowing the feather signs for either a period of time, to discontinue it and enforce the sign ordinance. Uh, the staff is ax- asking for direction on this matter. Is there a- a motion or?
Um, I have a- there's some discussion, Mr. Sheldon.
I was getting ready to make a motion, but go ahead, I'll wait for it.
Uh, my- my opinion and my motion would be to, um, to discontinue interim program. Um, it's time to go ahead and start, uh, paying for some of these signs, uh, because it does get a little distracting, running down the streets and seeing all these up and- it's ten dollars. Is that just per year, is that per sign? How's that work?
It's per sign.
Per sign. Uh, it's not a whole lot to ask, I don't believe, myself. Uh, that would be my- my direction, uh, if council so far.
So you want to suspend allowing the feather signs? Is that what your motion is?
It would be their alternative number one.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Hmm.
Not hearing the second. I would say it dies for want of a second. Is there another motion?
I'll make a motion that we leave the temporary signage, but I would like for it to come back, because the economy may change in another year. And I hate to put a regulation in temporarily, year by year by year. I know it's, I think, as Councilman Singleton said, it's ten dollars, but I think it helped- has helped the community by allowing them to do that. It is only ten dollars. And if you look at, you know, the other cities, apparently, I didn't realize that we were the least restrictive.
Mm-hmm.
It is a bothersome, but yet it's helping the business, so if we could just bring it back in- in a year from now and maybe make it either deleted or make it solid or start charging.
Okay. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
All second.
Been first and seconded. Are there any other questions or discussion on this motion? Not, I'll call for the vote. Roll call vote.
Base Man Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
No.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed four one. We will now, um, there's no- was there any communications, any written communications anyone had at this time? Then we will adjourn this regular meeting and go to redevelopment. Can we have a roll call, please?
Are you through Yanni?
I had to sneeze.
Oh, sneeze.
That's worse.
Yes. Um, board members, Powers?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Uh, public comments?
I have no speaker sheet.
No speaker sheet, okay. Would you read the consent calendar, please?
I will. We have four items. The first item, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of May seventeenth, two thousand eleven. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. Number three, approval of the treasures report for the period ending April, two thousand eleven. And number four, contract renewal for Connell- Connolly and Associates to manage the Galt housing rehabilitation program.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that you wish to discuss? If not, then I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Been first and seconded, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Base Man Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. It's passed unanimously. We will now adjourn from redevelopment and reconvene to the Galt City Council. Uh, with that, I would ask for the city clerk's report.
Just a couple of reminders. Um, there'll be a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting in the council chambers on June eighth at seven P.M. On June ninth, there will be a planning commission meeting at six thirty P.M. in the council chambers. I think that's all we have until our June twenty-first meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could, the Parks and Recreation Commission for tomorrow-
Madam Mayor, if I could, the Parks and Recreation Commission for tomorrow night has been canceled due to lack of agenda items.
Okay.
Oh.
Thank you. Um, now we're ready for comments by staff, which you laid off, so. Are there any other comments by staff?
No other comments from me.
Chief of Police? No comments?
No.
Thank you. Then we will go to comments by city council, and we'll start with Vice Mayor Powers.
Okay, I'd like to talk a little bit about our Independence Day celebration, which is gonna be July second. Um, we did get this dropped on our last lap real quick, but I think that, um, Parks and Rec really stepped up to the plate, and I think it's gonna be a lot of fun for a lot of people. We've got a lot of events planned, so I'd just like to let you know what's going on that day and for you to come and sign up and make sure you come down. Uh, we're gonna have a softball tournament, we're gonna have a volleyball tournament, a horseshoe tournament. Um, we're gonna have a band later on in the evening. We're gonna have nonprofits selling, uh, food, and we're hoping that that will get everybody in the community out. Uh, it's free. Uh, fireworks and the band later on in the evening. Uh, at Exhibition Hall, we're going to have my, I thought I had my papers in order, no, not in order. So I'm trying to make, think of, if I forgot anything, you know, let me know. Um, at the Exhibition Hall, we're gonna have an Exhibition Hall at Chabola Center, which is going to be a lot of old history of Galt. Um, I think it's gonna be a really fun celebration, it's gonna be here, you know, in our town, you don't have to go any farther. Um, I challenge anybody to come out to the horseshoe, uh, tournament and see if you can beat me.
Ooh.
And, uh, that's pretty much it.
Those muscles there. Sounds like a lot of fun. I mean, I think it's gonna be a blast.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Before I respond, uh, how long has it been since you threw a horseshoe?
I was the, the champion of the Donner Leg for many, many quarters of my life.
Now, when I ask, how many years ago?
Oh, I've been personal.
I've thrown them, I've thrown them within the last year.
Okay.
So did.
Is that, is that a coward's prayer? You just don't care about the horse.
No, no, no. No, I'll just see if I'm around, maybe.
Okay. We'll all come out and watch that.
Okay, okay.
There's some entertainment.
Hey, now that's a real free entertainment, huh?
Yeah.
Just with the horse attached.
Yeah. Councilman Singleton, do you have anything to share?
I have nothing tonight.
Uh, Councilman Shelton, any thing else about the horseshoes or whatever?
No, I just hope it wasn't gonna be like my uncle when we started warming up and he threw and he, he got two ringers and he says, well, we're playing with the ringers only, right?
(laughing).
No, I did attend the, uh, Galt High School graduation. I believe this is the last year that they have, uh, I believe it's like four hundred and twenty graduates. It's the largest class, and all of them are, you know, starting to be reduced. Of course, also, I did have a personal reason for being there. Our youngest, Thomas, did graduate.
Mm, no more.
He was, he was very lucky, because I, I believe, because he had both moms.
Both grandmas were there.
Oh, yeah.
It's a little pool, I tell you. It, I think, but it went off, right?
It sounded like my phone went off.
Yeah, it did.
There you go.
No, but it was fantastic, it was great. So if you weren't there, uh, you missed a good time. The kids were, were great. So that's all I had, thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
I'm good, nothing, nothing to say at this point.
Okay, well, before we, uh, share some of the events, I wanted to, um, ask the council to consider something that actually Councilman Shelton brought up the last council meeting, and that is to set up discretionary funds. Um, currently, we have a city council member's traveling money, I'll call it traveling money. And it kinda works out to three thousand dollars per council member, uh, five thousand for the mayor. Um, so what I would like you, one of the suggestions I would make, and get your feedback, is that we, we keep that amount of money, that we don't ask for any more money from the budget, but maybe set aside of our allocation, say, um, I don't know, say, two thousand for traveling and one thousand for discretionary funds that we can, with council approval, at least that's the, the way it was in the past, that one thousand dollars we could spend in a way that we felt like was beneficial. Um, and at the same time, if you still wanted to use that discretionary money to travel, to a conference or something, you could still do that. My thinking is it might uncomplicate some of the things that we, um, start thinking about wanting to do after we've already done the budget. Uh, for example, the last council meeting, we talked about the interns, the high school student who's an intern. And, um, so we, we had to take money out of, uh, our traveling money and put it into another account, and it just makes a lot of work for Inez. Uh, I know, it does. So anyway, what I'd like to see if the council would be willing to let the staff come back with some suggestions and agenda that on the next, at the next council meeting.
Yes.
Any thoughts?
Other comment? As you had stated, Mayor, yes, I would like to have that discussion. Yeah, I think it'd be great.
Good, I thought it was a good suggestion, too. Any, if it's okay, then I think I'm getting, uh, a consensus to, uh, direct staff to bring something back on that. Thank you. Um, I would like to mention the Memorial Day services that we held out at the cemetery. I thought, um, they were wonderful services, and I think for this small town to have the memorial area they have at our cemetery, that we should be proud of it. And I think our service, um, was second to none in the community. Uh, and it, I do wanna thank, again, we have so many wonderful volunteers that'll just pick up the ball and run with it. So I want to take a minute to mention, uh, those who put together that Memorial Day service. The Galt Cemetery, of course, again, Galt Parks and Rec, always there. Boy Scout Troop Two Thirty-nine, Galt Pathfinder, ladies of the Galt Veterans Association, who actually, for years, raised the money and put together a beautiful area out there. If you, if you haven't seen it, you need to go out there, it'll, it'll really touch you. Uh, the Galt Seventh Day Adventist, Parker Realty Express Type of Graphics, and Ben Salas Funeral Home. Uh, they did a magnificent job. And the other thing I want to mention, again, our wonderful volunteers. We had senior games recently, this past Friday, and it was sponsored by the, uh, Galt Rotary Club. And I was out there and it seemed like everyone was having a great time. There were many seniors that came out in wheelchairs, um, that I don't know how much activity or social life they would've had otherwise, but it was really a wonderful event. And wanna thank the Commission on Aging, who worked very hard, are, one of our committees, as well as the Rotary Club. Um, let me see, is there anything else? Want to congratulate all the graduates. I was fortunate enough to, uh, attend a lot of graduation ceremonies, starting with the city tots. They were great with their black hats, graduating all the way through the estralita graduation, which was also very nice. So to all of the graduates of the year twenty thousand eleven, congratulations. And if there's no other comments, I will adjourn the meeting at twenty minutes till nine.